I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of September 2nd, 2015 to order through the moment of sound meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to set his licensing board? All those in favor? License, liquor license renewals, open a hearing on a rule to follow the liquor licenses. Class A, Hopkinton Liquor Deport, Lynn Marie Finn, President, Hopkinton, P.L.W. Hopkinton, 229 Main Street, applicant president.
Representative.
D&amp;M Liquors, DVA, George Place, LLC, Dennis Plant, President, 999 Main Street, Hope Valley.
President.
Class BV, Brickup Restaurant, Keith Knott, Okay, applicant's president, Charah Ho Grill, Daniel? No? No? Okay. Venerable Country Club, LLC, Okay. Lucky House, Daniel?
Representative.
Oh, okay. Pavilion Steakhouse? Okay. Wood River Golf. Class B Limited, Main Street Pizza, Chris Huynski. Class D Full Privilege, Gordon Green Post, number 27. All right. Matt, you want to address that last one for us?
Yes, I'll be here for Gordon Green.
No one is here?
Okay. I had a conversation late today with a receiver for the Gordon Green Post who indicated to me that only he has the authority to file applications or to do anything on behalf of the Gordon Green Post. He didn't file his application and he asked that, and he also didn't know anything about it. So he asked that we continue the matter two weeks so that he could get in touch with people at the Gordon Green Post, figure out what was going on, and then be a little bit more prepared to proceed. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, they'll figure it out. The other problem with this application was that the application was not fully filled out, so you were going to have a problem with it anyway because the application needs to be fully filled out. So hopefully, if you continue it two weeks, by that point, they'll have figured out all those issues and you can hear them.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Is that half these pages notices posted?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, anybody have any questions?
Yes, Charah Ho Grill.
Yes.
That's a good question.
I know it's in tax.
Yes. I don't think they're very much.
Mr. Plant, can I ask you what's going on with D&amp;M Liquors in Hope Valley? I come from Hope Valley, I know that this building has been unoccupied for six months.
Yeah, can you come up?
Could you tell me what your status is because I heard all kinds of things between, actually stopped in the town hall about a month and a half ago, but the town clerk, she informed me that you had just been in and that all the paperwork was completed and everything was fine and you were planning to start stocking the building, opening it up very soon, a week, ten days, something like that, and that was a month and a half ago. So just wondering what your status is with the building and what's going to happen.
Well, the building needs some rehab work before, if I plan on staying there, I'm going to want to give it another month, maybe find another location that's suitable, and if not, then I'm going to have to, you know, place some special work in to build it itself to, you know, make it a liquor store that I can look around. So I'm kind of in-between right now, but something will be done probably within the next forty to forty-five days, whether another location, you know, and have a little purpose to that building or just make that one.
Did you purchase the building?
The building came with a license, correct.
Okay, so you actually own the building, that's correct.
So my question is, can we give you a, Pat, can we give you a liquor license without having an address?
He hasn't.
Yes, he just said he might move.
Oh, yeah, he hasn't moved.
Well, I would have to talk to you, you know, the commission and, you know, if I do move them to, instead, go to a halt.
Okay. When they have to come back?
Yes. It's such a nowhere.
It's such a.
Very specific.
Yeah.
I have a question, not for you.
Okay. Tom Hall said. All right, thank you.
I just have a question, I think it's on Main Street Pizza, the application, the name of applicant is Chris Huynski?
That's Chris Huynski.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I think it was supposed to, the name of the applicant is supposed to be Main Street Pizza.
Okay.
And I think Lisa, you said she'd have to be.
Julie can amend his application so.
You can just.
We might at some point, the next week or two.
You just need to have it amended, so it puts the name of the restaurant under the name of applicant.
You guys, you guys want to say?
Can I ask you? Can I ask a general question? Why are we asking the applicant, it says, "Give applicant aggressive mortgagee or leasing in a month or extent," which, you're asking these people to revolve how much they, you know, how much their mortgages or something like that?
So does state form.
Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
So the state needs to see that kind of money.
They know that at some point, get it out of that when we report.
I'd like to take, make a motion to set the limit on liquor licenses to class A2, class B Limited 1, class BV5, and class D1.
Second.
Class D1.
Would you want to do the un-motion first? That we, that we grant the renewals and then you set the limits?
Motion to grant renewal to each license subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes required to be issued.
Second.
And. Did you have a technical? No.
So, and continue.
Well, you made your motion already. Okay, I thought you, the easiest thing would just be to either, just stay it back or amend it.
Oh, just stay it back.
Okay.
All right. So why do we start with the motion to not renew again?
No, for instance.
Continue.
There are two, continue, Charah Ho Grill, we made the motion for the continuing Charah Ho Grill, and you're ordering, right, number 27.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor on that? Aye. Okay.
Motion to grant renewal to each license subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes required to be issued.
A second.
Okay, motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
And motion set limit on liquor licenses, class A2, class BV1, class BV5.
Do, okay, so you changed the numbers from A to one in the first one's D.
Second.
So we have to.
So the next time, we have to remember to add the extra class BV, A plus D, if you.
Goodness.
Was there a second?
Yes. Okay, motion made second, any discussion?
Well, I always thought those numbers would just set in stone somewhere. I mean, I didn't know that they could change them as they go, so somebody else could actually come in.
No, it's just, it corresponds to where we approved tonight.
That's where, oh, okay, all right.
So if we, if somebody new came to town, then we'd have to add, we'd have to increase.
Okay. Okay, motion made second, no further discussion, folks, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next is the Victon License Renewals, open a hearing on a rule to follow Victon licenses. Brickup Restaurant, 209 Main Street, Charah Ho Grill, 14 Spring Street, Happy Donuts, 231 Main Street, Venerable Country Club, 330 Vito Lane, Lucky House Restaurant, 32 Main Street, Mod Post Country Cookin', 865 Main Street, Mod Post Country Store, Tech Radio Fair, Main Street, Main Street Pizza, 229 Main Street, Victon Steakhouse, 15 Frontier Road, Pete's Grocery, 244 B, Ashwood Road, Spring Street Market, 1 Spring Street, West 's Bakery, 995 Main Street, Whispering Pines, 41 Sawmill Road, Wood River Golf, 78A Wood Hill, Alton Road.
I would like to take Charah Ho Grill, 14 Spring Street, Hope Valley.
Okay.
Motion granted renewal to the licenses subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes paid currently to issue.
Second.
With the exception of Charah. With the exception, Charah.
Motion made second.
I, two whoppers left. You know, we look at this list and it's nice to see the same businesses every year because they're continuing, and then you see how many there are, and we have a nice town. So I want to say thank you. We're here.
Motion made second, no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Motion to grant this licensing board, the county's council.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the group. Next is the consent agenda, approve town council meeting units of October 19th, 2015, workshop notes of September 28th, 2015, approve petition of National Grid and Verizon to local hold on all the stuff, set for December 7th, 2015, as a hearing to approve applications for holiday sales licenses.
Move that we approve the town council meetings of October 19th. It was just because he's absent, but I wanted to know.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, can I, can I focus on that?
Are you sure?
Yeah, you want to pull back?
Yeah, both of them, we have them.
I thought you were going to.
Okay. So you were going to go forward with the vote on, on, to vote on them separately, are you going to be throwing your motions?
I made a motion, but it didn't get a second.
No.
Because Dave said he wanted to.
I always have to abstain on the 28th, because I was thinking of the 28th.
All right, so what are you, approve, motion to approve?
Well, the 19th ones were something you needed to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
So what you could do, is you could approve the consent agenda, including the workshop notes and the petition of National Grid and Verizon and setting up the, again, the holiday sales licenses. You could abstain if you like, then you can go forward and.
I'll make that motion, please, on the second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay.
I'm staying.
Page nine.
Page nine, I think we need a couple of, one word, on this, the council president's report, one, two, three, four, five, six, six line down, it starts with federal highway system, it could only be used for, should be used for vending machine on that. That's maybe a bit easier read. And then the following page, page 10, oh, we go all the way down, the line that says finance, or rental housing, it says, "Mr. Lantheer reported the," it says first, but I think it means first.
Yeah.
Other than that, looks good.
Motion to approve town council meeting, the question, the changes?
Second. Okay, motion made second, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. You see? Thank you, Lisa. First public call. Council president report. I attended a press conference along with Barbara last Thursday with the very limited bus service starting in the Westley train station, and it'll have 20 stops from the Westley train station all the way to Stop &amp; Shop in Richmond. And the first month, it'll be free, after that, I think it's $2 for the ride, and it'll be just utilizing the buses that are in-between runs, so it's not costing a whole heck of a lot of money, and it's going to provide some ancillary service to our seniors, folks that need to get to pharmacies, Stop &amp; Shops, and all that kind of stuff. So it's really exciting, you know, I've got some pamphlets, hopefully.
Could you do a quick, no, a way to stop, start?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just run down a few.
Yeah, it's going to start, it's going to start at the Westley train station, then it's going to go to Main Street, Broad Street, Westley, Westley Senior Center, and all these grocery in Westley and Franklin Street, Walmart and Dunn's Corners, and it's going to go to Village in Maine and Bradford, and then Maine and Champlin and Nashua, Salt Lake City Springs.
Maine and Champlin.
Maine and Champlin, I'm not sure, and Nashua, it's in Champlin.
Oh, okay.
Boom. And then Salt Lake City Springs, Wood River Health, Main Street, Spring Street, right where the fire station is, and Spillson Road, Wisconsin Shop. So it's really, it's really exciting.
And Wood River Health might be a little difficult, and maybe there's, maybe there's room to, you know, massage it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because the elderly are behind the river, and they're going to have to walk up a hill or something, because a lot of them don't have cars.
Yeah, and really, who spearheaded this whole program was Michael Lichtenstein from Wood River Health, and Roy Sightinger from the Westley Superintendent of Schools, they met with and put a bug in Scott Agadision's ear, the mayor of war, who's Richard Channan, and they really made it come together, it was really exciting, you know, hopefully, it'll be crowded and they'll expand the service, I'm hoping, but just, I want us to give a word out, maybe Bill, they suggested we put it on the town website, that's something we will do, it'd be great.
Did you say the first month is free?
Yeah, it's starting November 13th, in, yes, in three weeks, yeah, three weeks of free service, right, so it starts November 13th, and it's really.
What did you think of schedules like that?
Yeah, I've got, I've got some, you know, but I'm going to reach out to the woman that was at the conference, at the press conference, and have her send me some more information.
Oh, and maybe there's a way to get that, well, there is a way, obviously, you get that on their website.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
I think we can get a number of them, Salt Lake City and Nashua.
So it's very exciting, like I said, they're just utilizing the buses that are just not being used for that time, and it's only going to be Fridays, I think, between 9:00 and 2:00. So it's, you know, it's going to be limited, very limited, but it's still some bus service that we've never had before.
How many trips are they making around?
Good question, I'm not sure.
Is that on to drop our seniors off at Walmart?
I'm sure they'll figure that out, I'm hoping that, we're not going to be responsible.
Maybe there's a couple more buses that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if they're, if you're going to put that on the website, maybe there's a pick-up time.
Yeah, 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 it does have times in here, so I'll, we'll get more specific in the address, we'll go get help with that.
Yeah, you know, people are going to have to find out where is the bus stop?
Right, right. And also too, Brian Patrick Kennedy in the paper had mentioned, and I forgot to mention this, was you can actually make an appointment for them to pick you up, I'm not sure how that's going to work.
If you're within three quarters of a mile of the room, and you have to give them 24 hours notice, but it is the only once a week, but if it becomes something that people use, then they'll see if they can expand it. So this is a really good beginning for all of the seniors for socializing and for shopping, and it's not just for medical.
And it's for everyone.
It's for everyone, right.
So it's very, very good news.
I intended for ride.
Me too.
Me too.
Thank you, thank you. Next, Tom Andrews report, go over here.
Thank you. October 22nd, I had attended a meeting with Brian Russo, Leon Nelson, Water Guy, Brad Ward, to further discuss the potential of Richard Pridges of approximately 50 new water meters and the documentation that we would need on the specifications for, request for qualifications for plumbing installation services to install the new meters that will eventually be ready remotely and prove the accountability of the town's current water distribution system. And then a week later, I attended the third meeting of the Waterline Review Committee at the Crandall House, where we discussed all the aspects of improving the system, the water meters, their installation, the cost, and the RFQ. We also discussed revising the waterline contracts for purchases of existing property on the waterline by new buyers, and proposed ordinance to all waterline operations. It's really about a 12-month process of this project, and it should significantly improve, hopefully, all aspects of the, of the accountability in our water distribution system. It's something that was kind of overdue, and we're addressing that now, so. Secondly, October 22nd, I met with Charleston Town Council President, Tom Getz, and discussed Prisons' Streetlight Acquisition and Energy Efficiency Improvement Operations Report, I think maybe about a month ago, the council received a copy of that. The next step in the process is for the council to consider authorizing a GIS audit and design report, which together would cost approximately, would cost $4,632. And after speaking with the town council president, we planned to schedule Tom Getz to make a second presentation at the next council meeting on November 16th. Lastly, on the 28th of October, I attended a meeting at the Crandall House along with Council President Frank Landolfi, Councilor Tom Buck, Planner Jim Lanfair, Paul Stizziak, and Mike Brook from National Grid regarding the monthly periodic updates of the status of the substation on Route 216, and that project is going very smoothly. Thank you.
Yes, Tom.
One addition to the National Grid thing, you know, I've been working with double calls, and we've got a thing over 114, National Grid took out 24, correct, Bill?
Really?
We actually made it up, way before last thing to go out, so the phone calls, I try to work.
Working. Thank you, Tom.
Can I ask a simple question?
Sure.
Bill, we're talking about 50 new water meters, I thought we had 83 customers, or 82, something like that.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, okay. Now, and then I see on the other page that approximately, or meters are, collecting meters are going to be $250 before installation, but we're talking about looking at possibly $60,000 from the town's water fund?
No, that's, that's not correct. The price is going to be, water meters are going down to $196 each.
Yep.
And that's the amount of money that's in the water fund right now.
Okay.
But that's, that's.
Because the inflation is going to cost something, I understand, too.
That's available, that's available to be spent.
Sure, okay.
Our project shouldn't cost anywhere near that, we're looking at probably between, hopefully, $20,000, $25,000, which would be with the purchase of the meters, and we have to, we have to issue an RFQ for professional plumbing services, because that job requires plumbers to do it, and there are some ancillary issues, for example, we have to put in expansion tanks, and there are, there are other things, according to Brad Ward, that need to go in for each one of the, each one of those locations.
You know, there's a little shot, I saw the $60,000, it says here, I thought if you take the $60,000, it's something that is $20,000, two for three, two dollars a piece plus installation, I thought that's a lot of money we're putting forward, and we're looking at CBDG, 18?
No, this is, this is a restricted water, water line account.
I'm reading right here, it says, this is a discussion to replace the possible, of possible monetary support from CBDG to assist in funding needed for your line.
I mean, a tower. That's the new tower.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe I have the CBDG, where are we looking to get?
And we're always looking at CBDG for everything possible, you know.
Especially, because it's so low.
But this is, this is not the only, it's only, it's only about a third of what we have saved in there, maybe, right? Except the expense of this.
Yes.
I think it's really a great, I think it's great progress, I'm surprised we're doing it. Sylvia, thank you for knowing so much about it, to move it forward.
Oh, I have a question for Bill, listen, Tom, the meeting, the National Grid meeting, the, when you look at the field and you can see that they have their construction equipment and it's all fenced in, we have that area that's fenced in, that's going to return to to.
Yes, it's going to be a deep.
Right, okay, that's all I need to know.
They have the same reason I was.
Oh, yeah, I know, because they said.
Well, when I first saw it, I thought that's where they were putting it, I was like, awesome.
Yeah, if you, if you look at it, you can see the site from the back, right?
You can see it from the back.
Okay, great, any other questions, guys?
No.
Okay, thank you. Under all business, discuss and consider appointing an individual to represent the town on the Wood Architaph Watershed Association Wild and Scenic Study Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Maureen Cannery to represent the town.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, all of them, actually, any questions, folks?
Well, you know, we could add for the report, for the minutes, that where she works, she's very qualified for this, it's, it's perfect, and she works at the, I'm not sure what they call it, Near Dance at Ocean.
Really? You are.
Oh, you are.
You're a graphic institute.
Right, there you go, yeah, and that's where she works, she's been there for 18 years, and she lives in our town, and we're lucky that she.
And she knows the route, she's canoeing on her kayak, she's out there, so she knows the route.
She's a master of the, something.
She's a master of marine administration, so I think she's going to be a great addition to the, to the study committee.
So Sean's got a partner?
We'll send her a letter if you like.
Yeah, it'd be great, too.
Repoint, Sean?
Yes.
We need to call her, too, I think we said, first meeting's the 5th.
I think they both pulled that, they kicked it up until the 7th.
All right, great. All right, great. Thank you.
Can we hold that?
Yeah, yeah, okay, we had some discussion, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Next, under new business discussed, consider acting upon a memorandum agreement between REMA and the town for Code Red Services, with or without a separate additional agreement between Code Red and the town for supplemental service upgrades. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir. Nice seeing you, everybody.
Quite a memo, Ron, quite a memo.
Yeah, spent a lot of back and forth over the last couple of months, so, that's why I had to write some notes down. Well, basically, what's happening is, if you remember back to 2012, we had the One Call Now system, they were bought out by, their emergency services division was bought out by Code Red, so since September 2012, we've been using Code Red as our emergency notification system, which has been very successful, and we currently have a very basic version of it, there's a more advanced version, which I'll get into right now, but we have the basic version, and we have unlimited use of it, because that carried over from our contract with One Call Now. What REMA did was, the state has no, or had no, emergency notification system, and there were some towns in the state that didn't have it also, so what REMA did was, they went out and either solicited bids or just went with Code Red, so there's a statewide contract now that any town that didn't have an emergency notification system could jump on board with a REMA and get it for free. The issue with that is, we could sign onto that and not pay anything, but we would lose our ability to do non-emergency calls, and I know you guys like to do the budget hearings, the new one also has a more robust group call system, so if the police or public works wanted to have access to it to call everyone at once in a blast call, to call them in for a storm, you wouldn't have that ability either. So basically, they did it so that the towns that didn't have the system could get onto it for free, because they didn't have anything. So the MOU, if we signed it, will get us free, free service, if we want to still have the ability to do unlimited, we would have to have a supplemental contract with Code Red for the unlimited, which comes out to $3,255 per year. This first year, actually, we'd be paying less, because in my last EMPG grant, our supplemental bill, I'm going to try to get 50% of the universe, so the first year, it won't cost us anything. The $3,255 sounds like a lot, but it's actually pretty close to what we're paying now, with our prepaid four-year contract and the overages that more people signed up for, so it's about a $250 difference going forward in the years, so it gives us a lot more, if we sign the MOU, we amped it to supplemental, we get unlimited everything, so we'll stay what we have, we get extra pass codes, we get weather warnings out of automatic, if people sign up for that, so if there's a god forbid a tornado coming, it automatically sends it through their National Weather Service link, mapping, hooks to social media, and it's a more robust system, the mapping, and being able to draw certain areas, it's a lot better than what we have now. So it's basically going to be up to, you know, the council, what they want to do moving forward, you know, stick with the free stuff, but then we're going to lose all our other capabilities if you still want to do the supplemental calls.
So, so Ron, right now, it's, we pay about $3,000 or so, right?
Yeah, we pay about.
$2,900 or something.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, Hope Valley ambulance signed on to us to use it for their organization, they have access just to their groups, they pay us a small amount of money a year to have that capability, and Bill and I were talking, we're going to offer it to the other departments in town, the two fire departments and the ambulance, so that would help us offset any extra money that we might have to pay, so it could be up to $1,000 if they all sign on, and from what we heard today, they're interested, but they have to go back through their own budget process. their own budget process.
So, so it's about the same, we'll, we'll get a more expanded service.
Yes.
Will police and DPW with the new upgraded system be able to jump on it?
With the new one, we're going to get 14 pass codes. Right now, we're limited to three, so we can have up to 14 authorized users. And with this new system, we can, obviously, the general call, the whole town is limited to certain people, but you can give any access to anybody depending on what they need. So if one of the, the ambulance services signs on, they can just have their group, and then someone like me, I could call everybody. So we would have the capability to do that. And also with upgrading with the state, we'll share data, so if you sign down with the state and you lived in Hoppington, you automatically get put into our system, and our system would go up to there. And also, the state 911 data, which currently Code Red uses just commercial databases, so they'll actually get the state E911 data, and that would share with us, too. So we're getting more bang for the buck that way.
So, yeah, 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 sure. Okay, I'll save my questions because I keep, you know, all this stuff, so, yeah, I'll go to my right, so, yeah.
Oh, Tom, go ahead.
Now, when the state puts something out, does it go to the people who already signed up to it now?
Since we have not signed with the MOU, they would only, their database, from what I understand, now will only have 911's telephone numbers, and if you signed up on the state's website with their link, that's all you would get.
The town's link.
No, we're not sharing right now, so they wouldn't have...
So if we, we joined them and took this supplemental thing, would their warnings come over to our, automatically?
Yes.
Okay, so that could be, we could get warnings all the time, then. Could they probably...
Yeah.
My concern is that, you know, something coming up in Boroughville that doesn't...
Well, they can, unless it's a statewide emergency, they wouldn't blast it, well, in theory, they wouldn't blast it to everybody. If it's something down this way, we would still have control over our area. I would only see them sending it out if it was a statewide emergency.
A blizzard or something like that.
A blizzard, a hurricane. To be honest, they kind of, this was dumped on the towns at the 12th hour, 11th hour. So there isn't a lot of detail yet from, from them and what they were doing with the system, but they're, they have a list of like a standard operating procedure of what they'll use their system for. And the towns that sign on with them for their emergencies, they can only use it for certain emergencies. So it's, it's kind of locked down where the state isn't going to be sending out messages to, if something's happening in Wallbrook, you should get it down here. Because it's all geographic, GIS-based.
Okay. The other question, Andy, you had, we had X amount of users that could access this. In order to get those, you'd have to go and sign up with that group, or that group would, say, Hope Valley Ambulance.
Yeah, they're going to use it. What they do is...
Just their members?
Yeah, they put their members in a spreadsheet, and it gets downloaded into the system, and they only have access to send their training announcements and stuff. They use, they've been using it for like two years now. There hasn't been any issues. They, they're just limited to their group. They can't get into that.
So does anybody oversee what actually gets put out on it?
I could listen to everything that goes through.
I know, because like when we put things out, like we didn't want to start doing the budgets and stuff, it's very, we didn't want it being political or anything like that. I mean, I don't want to see the system be abused by other organizations and stuff like that. I mean, we've been very careful as to how we, how the messages are very neutral-based.
Yeah. No, I, I do review them. Everything that goes out there is recorded in the system. I could log in right now and play every single message they have. I do go in there periodically, and you just hit it and it'll play it. And they only send out, for example, you know, this training next week on, you know...
That'd be my own concern, not to, not to get it abused.
Yeah.
I mean, it stands, we've been so very careful just to make everything...
Yeah, Hope Valley Ambulance is the only one that so far is...
Well, when you get more and more entities involved, there's more of a chance of...
Can I come up with that, Ron? So, so say, Ashway Ambulance is going to have a fundraiser barbecue, you know, they, they ostensibly could put that on, on this...
They can't access the town.
They can't access the type. They'll just be...
Only to their member group.
Oh, good, okay. That's, that's good.
No, that's, that's very locked down. The only people I can get into are pretty much Bill and myself for that sort of business.
What Tom brought up was my issue also, and that is, if you open this up, which makes sense, and it's going to go to the fire department, so you know how the ambulance has been using it, and you say you can't listen to it, I think what we'd like to hear is, we need to know that someone is listening and making sure, for instance, the fire departments, I mean, why would they use it? And you just brought up an example for the ambulance, for this, it's important to them to be able to contact their people for events and training. That makes sense, just because I'm just trying to think of what emergency would they, they wouldn't be using.
Well, for example, Hope Valley Fire has a hazmat team, and it's also comprised of members that might be in other departments, and it's difficult sometimes for them to all be on the same radio frequency, so they could just put their cell phone numbers and whatever else in there, and they could go in and say, you know, we have an emergency wherever, and it goes to all those other devices.
There's a spill in the highway, whatever.
Yeah. It's just an extra way for them to be notified, and it's, I probably listened to a lot of the Hope Valley one, just to, like you said, to review it, and I haven't heard one yet that wasn't, had to do with ambulance core business. They were just meeting minutes. And I'm sure we could put something together, like a, an SOG that says you can only use it for, for these type of things.
We should, that's what I was going to ask you, maybe we should have some sort of agreement that the manager would have that is between the town and the agency using it and spells out what they can use it for.
Yeah, we can probably just take the states and massage it to a local level and say you should only use it for, you know, emergencies, training notifications, and stuff like that.
And, and of course, I am wanting to do this additional agreement at the $3,255 or whatever the amount ends up being for us. Yeah, because we, it's important for our town to be able to have access to it, like we have in task.
Okay, excellent. Yes, Paul?
Sort of on the same thing that Tom was talking about, too, is that you said that there are a few people or a few of the passwords that would be for people who could reach everyone, and I would assume, Bill, that would be the town manager, EMA?
Right now, we only have...
I want to make sure that that stays to a very small amount.
Yeah, right now, we only have three in our system, and it's myself, Bill, and it was the IT GIS person. But if we wanted to open it up to like the police, for example...
No, no, I want it, I want it only very specific, because then either you or Bill or council president, but just three people having access to everyone.
It has the ability to limit it to as many people as you want.
Because I'm sure the chief would talk to Bill or to you, and then you would send it out. So I think we need to make sure that that particular password, those passwords are not given out.
Yeah, no, it's, the passwords are unique to the person, and it's basically, it gives, it's levels of access. So if you, for example, were the president of, you know, Happy Fire Department, you could say, you know, Barbara, you only have the access to your department, and that's it only. It's a very secure system.
Right, it's just I'd like to make sure that whoever has access to everyone, there are very few of them.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
There are probably no more than three, max.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Yeah.
Well, I like the idea of the, I feel free, but I, I'd also like to know what, what kind of bang we're giving for a buck. Do you have any idea how many messages or calls were, were sent out as part of the supplemental portion of this program?
The non-emergencies?
Yeah, non-emergencies.
The only ones, I don't have the minutes, I mean, I could get it. It would only have been...
What part? Three? Three? Three or four?
Yeah, it would have been...
The chairman's school budget.
We've had a couple of like the, the budget, whatever the budget ones you've sent out, and maybe like when we did the food clicks, handful.
So, so, so we're paying 30, we're going to be paying $3,200 for like a handful of calls? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it goes by minutes, too. It's, it's not, you're paying for not the calls, it's for the amount of time for each phone call.
Okay.
So it could be 5,000 minutes for like to call everyone in town.
Remember what happened to the BDA, it was a huge fire. We had that then, and we had to, and people had to leave, evacuate, evacuating. That's something that they can send out a call just like that, and people evacuate. That's what it's for.
That's a good idea.
Because you never know when you're going to need it.
Because one call, they, they, they pay for the whole thing. You're right, plenty of...
Where you're accessed to 95, you get some kind of spill up here with hazards, gas, material, and they can, that was, that was the whole premise of why we started, just back in 2009.
I mean, it's one of the more cross-effective systems that are out there, we're already invested into it very early with all the, we have probably 4,800 residential and business numbers and then cell phones and stuff now. So, I mean, if we were to go out on our own and purchase home things, it would be over $7,000 a year, just based on our population and as the towns get bigger, it's more money.
I agree with it.
So, Ron, you guys all set?
Yes.
So just to kind of drill it down, I know the new upgraded system will be certainly a benefit, I'm not suggesting that, that cannot, if we join that and sign that MOU, we can't have any non-emergency calls on that.
If you just sign with the, the free state one, they have a specific list of, here, this, this is only we can use it for. So even if, if I had to send out calls to my volunteers or anybody else, we can't do it, no budget, no general anything. You have to be...
So that's, that's the free portion?
That's the free portion.
Okay. So are we, we're all in agreement that, I mean, for the five or six times we may use it, it's going to cost us $3,300 bucks?
It's there for an emergency, and we're just happy to use it for the budget, and it took us a while to get around to that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but it was there specifically for emergencies, even if we didn't use it for the whole year. That's how it started.
So, so we can, we need to have a choice of a free version, which no, non, non-emergency calls cannot be placed.
Correct.
Or we can do this ancillary or supplemental increase to...
Yeah, you'll get the emergencies and then unlimited, you can do whatever you want with it.
Unless you get other, other agencies to sign on, that's kind of trouble.
I had suggested to Bill, I said, why can't you reach out to the other ambulance corps of fire, because if we can drop it $1,000, it's $2,300 instead of $3,300.
I'll move that we enter into the MOA with the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to highlight what you just said. Early today, I, Hope Valley Ambulance has already subscribed to this. I contacted Chief Justin Lee of the Hope Valley Fire Department, District Chief Jim Teave of the Ashway Ambulance, and Chief Ron Spazato of the Ashway Fire Department, and I explained the whole system to them, and they said, although they don't have formal approval from their boards, all three of those other organizations would be willing to sign on and pay the town $250. It would be a total of $1,000, which we do expect.
$2,300, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so I'll finish the motion, that we enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency, and that we also enter into a separate additional localized agreement for unlimited non-emergency use that renews annually, at, it costs not more than $3,255.
$3,255.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Good job, David.
All right, next, number 200, new business discussed, consider scheduling a workshop
to finalize the proposal with the solar energy collection facilities, personal property capacity. The reason this is on, you know, I know we have a lot of questions, concerns about the ordinance, I, I want to apologize to the council, I, I was looking at the abatement portion before the ordinance was on the books, so I kind of put the cart before the horse. So I apologize for that. And, you know, I think we could probably incorporate all the concerns and questions that everyone has and add to Pat's draft of the ordinance and, and put something together. So I, I'm looking forward to hopefully getting something scheduled to iron that down if we can.
Isn't this something that could, that just simply goes to staff, it goes to the assessor, it goes to the collector, they have comment, and it's reviewed by everyone?
Yeah.
And then it comes back to the council meeting, done. In other words, if there was any, if they had any issues, we've, we've got a report from staff?
Well, yeah.
Yes, Bill?
Well, Bill had reached out to Chris, Rita, and Brad. They all submitted their questions slash concerns in email. I'm not sure if that was circulated or not, I can't remember.
Yes, whatever their comments were.
It was, you know, so...
Do you put them in the council package?
Yeah, yeah, I think we did, yeah, so. So my, my theory is, I mean, we've got, the, the department heads viewpoints, and, you know, I, I kind of want us to kind of...
It's just not in this packet. There's no, so I don't know what their comments were, well, it's not in the workshop.
Yeah.
But do we have to have a workshop?
Well, I, I would like to, because I think we have, you know, it's a new ordinance, you know, I, I know you had some concerns about the tenure thing, you know, it just...
I was hoping that staff would look at it and then just get an address, and maybe I'll send it out.
Oh, well, not, not quite. No, because I read some of their concerns, and they didn't incorporate it.
I didn't see it.
Somewhere else.
All food packets?
Yeah, all food packets.
So...
I'm spoiled, I'm used to, if somebody's on the agenda, I'm usually seeing them here.
So, Tom, you're the only other working person like me, so why are you able to, why are you able to fit it in? I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, I guess.
You pick a date, and I'll tell you like that.
Can we, can we...
Well, this week.
Is the end of the week too, too tight for everybody, or is that like a Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday?
We're tending to...
I'm thinking, what, maybe, what, 5:30, 6:00, or a half hour, 45 minutes?
Is any, is anyone using the town law on the first Thursday?
First Thursday, no.
Juvenile hearing, and they tweeted, please. Okay, so we'll, we'll have a workshop Thursday.
And do 6:00 to 7:00?
Okay, wait a second.
Thursday?
6:30, maybe?
6:30, so I have that.
Two days from now, right?
Yes, all three days.
Yeah, Thursday's, I have that.
Thursday?
Folks, 48 hours.
Yeah, yeah, 48 hours.
Tuesday, 6:00.
Thursday, 6:00.
6:30.
I've got an appointment, I'll send it to you soon.
6:30 will work.
6:30 Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, we're trying to hash out.
Good for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Another three.
Oh, and, but I will find those comments from staff in last week's packet.
Yeah. Another three, discuss and consider scheduling a special town council meeting for an executive session to select town solicitor candidates to be interviewed. Lisa?
What's the deadline, by the way, of the...
The fifth, I think.
It is the fifth? So let's see when someone's available for next week. Is Monday available? Everyone, tonight, is it available to us, the evening?
The manager must be...
Seven, so the day of grandmas.
So maybe we can meet tonight? And so what we'll need is, let's see, the deadline's the fifth, so we'll have everything for our council packet, we'll all have Monday night. Six-thirty again? And it would be an executive session?
Yeah, six-thirty, fine. Everybody else okay with that?
Yeah.
It's six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty, we're in line, fine.
Okay, and then, number four, discussing, consider scheduling a executive session for November sixteenth, twenty fifteen, Friday.
I think on that Monday, we'll know when to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I love the opinion that, you know, having a council meeting is too rushed. There's not enough time.
And those, all those applications, we'll be applying, more is applying, which comes to the clerk's office? Yes. We expect a flood, right, Pat?
The focus, six-thirty? Okay, yes, next on the agenda is boards and commissions.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Stephanie Booth to the charter commission, second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Phil Spelis to the police commission, second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Teresa Prescott to the historic district commission.
Second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Margaret Steele Esquire as municipal court judge for two years to November twenty-seventeen.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for Nancy Messenger to the annual...
Who?
Nancy.
Nancy?
Nancy.
Second. Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Last public point. Welcome to the panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.